Our pledge allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation of our own. Indivisible, that delivers to each other for all ever.
As required by Montana law, members of the community are given an opportunity to make brief comments to the board on any matters not included in the agenda. Individuals wishing to be heard shall first be recognized by the chair. Individuals after identifying themselves will proceed to make brief comments. Board would like to remind everyone that to avoid violation of individual rights and privacy, if a member of the public wishing wishing to address the board will not be allowed to make comments about any student, staff member, or member of the general public. No action may be taken on any matter discussed or public comment, unfortunately meeting until such time as the matter is specifically noticed on an agenda. The public has been allowed the opportunity to comment. We have any public comment on an agenda. Saying done, we will proceed with our meeting and the recognition of trustee McLeod. What did you want to say something first? Was to come up here for a second, has it?
I have to stand right here.
Sure, wherever's most embarrassing. So, not everybody knows this, but Jessie stepped in the position there was opening about three years ago, is that right? Um, she's very passionate about trades. And has a career in construction, spent all sorts of different construction related. Tasks, um, she's done a lot to help the CTE program, Belgrade Schools. Um, she ran for election, reelection one after your appointment, which we were all happy about. Sheraton Technology and CTE committees, I believe. And I guess a little bit less her known things about Jessie, she's married to Casey, she has two boys, Colton and Jackson, Jackson's in ninth grade and Colton is seven, seven, six.
Awesome.
So, I wanted to thank you for your service and your commitment and all the time you've spent working with us over the past three years, and we're sorry that you can't continue it, but we understand. And we got this little token. For you to take home and.
Thank you.
Remind you of. Your time in class.
I know. Right? Good luck. Um, I want to say thank you quick, but also, um. Uh, I'm not going to stop dedicating my time to support public education, the teachers, the students, and administration, so thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
And with that sadness comes the acknowledgement of our new newly elected trustees.
Trying to get in touch with John.
Okay. We're gonna have to wait for a minute. Um, is it all right?
No, because it's a load of light of us, right?
Yeah. How far out is he?
Um, his secretary's trying to get him on the line now. If we, we can do greater reports.
Okay.
Of course, students staff, that can happen.
Would you guys like to start later in the morning? So your superintendent's report, Dee Dee Fruff with. Similar, excuse me.
You want time?
Um, okay, it's homecoming week. We started off with a pep rally this morning. The senior is one of the, what's it called, the shout out or whatever.
Class chat.
Class, yeah. Um, so we're excited for our seniors. Um, lots of great events being held, so um, look at the website and check it out and come to any and all of them. Um, the homecoming football game is Friday night and the homecoming dance is Saturday night. Um, also on Saturday, obviously, uh, Belgrade's going to celebrate their fall festival. Prostart, our very own Prostart, for the first time ever is hosting the pancake breakfast. Um, in our high school commons, so come get your tasty pancakes between seven and nine thirty in the morning. Uh, we also have lots of groups marching in the parade at ten AM and we'll have a booth at the festival where we invite everybody to come learn more about the um, fourth elementary school bond. And ask any other questions you want about uh, the school system. Uh, congratulations to Courtney Duma, our high school culinary arts instructor who's been selected by OPI as one of four finalists. For the twenty twenty-six Montana Teacher of the Year Award. Um, the final decision's going to be made after a formal interview process which takes place in October. So fingers crossed, if you're celebrating Courtney as the Teacher of the Year for the state um, at our November meeting.
Woo-hoo, woo-hoo.
Yeah, Courtney.
You should take a little while of her honey, whether which goes to.
Right, yes, there you go.
I think so too.
Um, and I would like to introduce Mary Hampton. Um, Mary is our new uh, halftime HR director. Uh, she has twenty-five plus years of experience in human resources. She's been an HR consultant for over twenty-five years and has been in the Gallatin Valley since twenty thirteen. Prior to starting human resources, she worked in HR and recruiting for tech companies in the Portland area. She graduated from Cal Poly San Luis Obismo with a degree in psych psychology and began her career in employment services with the California Employment Development Department. Mary's a member of Prospera and BPW, which is Bozeman Professional Women, and has served on their board of directors. She's also a member of the Society of Children's Book Writers and Illustrators and a published author. Her most recent book, a children's book called A World of Cookies for Santa, received gold medal recognition from Moonbeam Children's Book Awards. And the American Book Fest Best Book Awards. Nicely done. Um, Mary is married to Dean Hampton, who's here with her tonight, who's the executive director of Love Inc. They have two sons, Kyle is a senior business major at MSU and Bryce is a sophomore at the Southern Community College in Waco where he's playing baseball. So welcome, Mary. Do you have any words of wisdom you want to share? Wave to your. Sounds good. Well, we're very happy to have you here. And that's it.
All right. Why don't we move on with our student representative report with trustee Caitlin?
So as you've heard, my name is Caitlin Bogstad, um, some of the black, um, thank you for that, by the way. And I'm on the student body president this year. Uh, I run student council freshman year because I've always believed that students should have a say in our school sheet. I plan dances, spirit weeks, fundraisers, and recently pep rallies. I've been fortunate to be involved in many areas of the school, from performing in theater choir, challenging myself with AP classes. Through these experiences, I've learned a lot about the student body, vulgar kind. Recreative, smart, athletic, and always strive to succeed. With this, they give me the opportunity to send them here tonight. And because of that, I'm excited to share what student councils are working on since the end of last school year. Homecoming is actually this week and just today I saw how spirited my fellow classmates can be. With that, our theme this year is Hoco, Here We Go Again, which was loosely based off the music movie musical, Mamma Mia, with each spirit day according to an ABBA song title. Today was the winner takes it all, our class cover day. We also had our fall sports pep rally. Tuesdays, Lay All Your Love On Me, our tropical Tuesday. Wednesdays, Thank You For The Music, where students dress as their favorite music artist or rep their merch. Thursdays, Looking Through My Figures, where students dress as their younger selves. Friday is Gimme Gimme Gimme, That Panther Spirit. And throughout the week, we have manly volleyball tonight at seven, senior sunrise tomorrow, and a home volleyball game. Powder buff Wednesday, film point football game Friday, and our dance Saturday night. This week is a perfect example of how spirited and involved our students can be, and I'm so excited to see how everything comes together. I just know this year's going to be full of entertainment and get to friends. Thank you.
Thanks Caitlin. Uh, district clerk, Carrie. I think we've seen Carrie's notes. Do you have any questions for her, anything you want to talk about?
No.
Any questions for you?
Um, our superintendent's trying to get here since.
I'll go slow.
So take your time.
Congratulations on your family event, by the way. Uh, board report. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about?
Purple things. Took a, spent a few hours with Dee Dee and she took me around and showed me the facilities in the area here in the last couple of weeks ago and uh. Was actually quite interesting. Lot of stuff, it was nice to lay my eyes on, some things surprised me, good ways, some things. Probably need to work on, uh, but you know, the old Japanese uh. Theory of Kaiser, continuous improvement applies here, I guess. Uh, and I see some of the things that I I commented on are already in our uh. In our facilities meetings, uh, agenda, so that'll be coming up and uh. Then we also had a meeting here a few days ago for the bond, um. The bond committee or for the uh, fourth elementary and uh. Dee Dee's got quite a task list of, you know, things to punch out for getting us uh, keeping us on track to promote this and. Get informed and educate people so that they uh, know what they're voting on in uh, November. So, appreciate all the hard work, Dee Dee, thank you. Thanks for your time.
But. I was just going to say that today I had the opportunity to be over in the middle school. And got to walk through those new bathrooms, um, the the pictures that we were trying to send, not do justice, they were fabulous, beautiful. Really nice to see, great job done.
See, definitely, I saw that on the, on the facility tour. One of those things, if you didn't know the before, the after doesn't, you know, blow you away, but if you knew the before, it's like, oh, that makes.
And I don't know that anybody cares but me, but just so you know, our girls volleyball team played in a little tournament on Saturday. And out of every game that they played, they lost one set and basically were the winners of the tournament. It was like, pretty, uh, more pound to proud right there.
Did you want to talk about your cell phone?
Oh, yes, and I should tell you too, because of where I live, I'm just a hop, skip, and a jump from the high school and. I've been around since so long, parents felt comfortable just flopping by and I've had some parents just pop in and thank me, um, thank us. Uh, for the cell phone policy. I've had some positive remarks from teachers from high school. Thanking us for the cell phone policy, and the best part, I've had high school students say thank you, which. I was waiting to have my lunch ate instead. Thank you. So I hope that it is going okay. If not blame Julie, if you use her ideas.
Everybody else? Thank you, students. I wanted to say something along those lines too. It's getting a little tougher out in society to hold a job. Oracle had a bunch of layoffs this week, and I'm still employed. But one of my kids was complaining about um, getting, somebody should have played to class. And the teacher made him go down and get a note, which I appreciated because there's some things that our kids need to learn. One of them is being on time. One of them is being respectful, and uh, one is not playing on your phone during class. And that will really help you in the job market when things are tough, so I know it's been an adjustment, switching from COVID to this, but thank you. Um, anyone else? Okay, um, technology department, is Mike here?
He is not. If anybody has questions about anything, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Do my best to answer them.
Um, multi-factor authentication is going okay?
Yeah, I think the biggest, um, you know, I did have people in all the buildings the morning that we rolled it out. Um, to try to provide support, and we had some glitches, obviously, um, but um, I haven't heard. Anything since then, so um, I think we're, we're getting used to it and figuring out, you know, if there are quirky things happening, how to, how to address those things, so. Um, I think that has been as smooth as possible for a big change like that.
How about your network upgrades? Have you noticed any difference in the bandwidth of your speed of your network?
Um, yeah, we have to work faster than our.
I tip up with the internet.
Um, yeah, it's uh, been a lot more consistent, so we're pretty happy about that.
Okay, any other technology related questions? Um, I guess we can proceed with our principals, uh, elementary Natalie's here. Any questions for Natalie? Want to say anything, Natalie?
Uh.
We have plenty of time.
So, uh, sure, um, Matt's gonna laugh at me because this is one of those things that. Matt denied me not making a bad in the shirt, but our theme this year is Together We Make Money Magical. So, Peter Bloom, favorite shirt, take one, pass it down. Uh, we, uh, there's a picture floating around of Dee Dee and me and a unicorn head. Um, and it's just been really fun. Our spirit, we went on the spirit train as well, so ours was kindness today, so we're supposed to wear shirts with kind messages and acts of kindness. Um, I have your bag, my bag, so don't pick up. Um, yeah, it's been a really fun start and the four-year-olds are the cutest humans on earth that have in the building. And they're just very happy and, I don't know, it's been a good. It's been a good start, so I don't know if you guys have any questions, I know the other, uh, elementary kind of the same boat as well, just getting things rolling and. Things are going pretty smoothly.
How's your numbers overall at schools?
They, um, so class sizes, we we dropped about four sections of classrooms. Um, we're down to four uh, first grades, four second grades, and three um, third grades, but the class sizes are are bigger. Um, so I think the numbers are pretty similar to last year, a little bit down, but pretty similar, and then having four-year-old students too, so. Um, our specialists and stuff are picking up some of the lunchroom help, uh, we're trying to have, because we don't have a behavior interventionist right now, trying to have. Extra supervision outside when kids are out there to kind of hopefully catch things before they become vigorousious. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that back.
Yeah, I am, I'm sorry, I'm cheesy, but we have bad shirts, so we're like trying to, I do, we have a sunshine committee meeting where we like do fun things for staff and. Um, you know, for the PT day or, I think it was today, or you know, other things like that, and so we're gonna like put a magical spin on all of that, and so. It's been our PTC, put up their board and have like a magical spin on that, so it's kind of fun.
Middle school, did you like that?
That question's, we're not nearly as fun of the elementary. Uh, but it's just as exciting, I'll tell you, but. Yeah, I know, I'll tweet you some, I will. Um, we're off to a good start. Our enrollment is is, um, you've seen the numbers there, we. Um, I think we have fifty-three new ones and unenrolled moved kids. We have about nineteen, for instance, over nine fifty. Which in the past, of course, we're down a little bit, we've always been close to just over a thousand. Um, something else, a lot of new staff that we've had this year, not, I guess not that many, but. Um, you can see their names and things there. We had a cute little video for you for the, our summer staff. Adventures, which we do at the beginning of every year, I'll, I'll share with you, um, with permission from the staff of the kids and so on. Something new that we always do is, uh, we're always looking to do new and different things, and one of the different things that we made is. Uh, we looked at our schedule to try to carve out more minutes for academic time, and we did. Uh, we begged, borrowed, steal from all the places, and so. Um, we've been able to do that, and with fifth grade now, all being on the same page with all the common curriculum, makes it really nice, because now we're able to, what we're doing. With the fifth graders is, um. If those kids and having gifted and talented onward now too has been really nice, and so we have a nice pathway. Uh, for those kids that are scoring high in the ninety-ninth percentile, ninety-six and above. They go to their first part of their fifth grade math class, and then they're in a sixth grade benchmark class, uh, to get that extra enrichment, so. That's been nice, and we've been able to do that with our fifth grade schedule that we, that we have in the sixth or eighth grade already have their pathways of accelerated classes and such. So that's something new. Uh, so our, our class sizes or class minutes went from forty-seven to fifty, which is makes a bitter difference, so it's, it's nice and it does make a difference, so. All the sports are underway, all kinds of activities happening throughout the building. We also are involved in spirit week and the kids get into it and they love it, so, um. We appreciate that from the high school because we, we tag along. Yeah.
Do you have any outstanding positions?
Um, no, I just, I'm, I'm okay, but. I may, Natalie may be stealing one from me, which is, which is okay, which is okay, I think we have it figured out. I think we've got a solution, so. So I, right now, I'm, I'm staffed, you know.
That's the first time I've heard that in like five years.
Yeah, I know, yes. So thankful for that.
Any other questions for Julie? I was wondering, like, since we got our new curriculum and we have time. When do you think you'll start seeing like?
Well, I think, I think, well, I think we saw a little bit of it last year, and I feel like this year will be another good. Because it's been, it's been rolling through the elementaries, and now we're just hitting those fourth graders coming in, the new fifth graders have had that now. For a couple of years with that curriculum, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Correct, this is the second year.
Second year down the file, but with, we, uh, math, yeah, yeah, third year, so. Yeah.
I got a really quick question for Natalie, I'm sorry. Are you doing anything for, when we were there, I toured, we picked up on that it's twenty-five years of rich view, are you doing anything for that?
We had, but we can't.
I was gonna say, because it's some tool that, you know, it's, it's a technical benchmark.
It is. I think they'll come probably for this school year, maybe with like the level ceremony for the graders type, type thing, so that's a really great idea. The other thing I want to add that missed the building thing, the reason that we chose the theme Together We Make Learning Magical is because it takes all of us, right? Like the families, the community, the staff, the students, um, and so that was kind of like the wraparound view of, and like communicate that to. Families and staff and stuff, but that was the together piece, because like it takes all of us, so I think we kind of. Be there for the, I guess.
I like it. Um, I have one question or one comment, it's probably for both the middle school and elementary. Um, we talked a bit about the new school and the reason that we're trying to do the new school and the fact that we, uh. Quite a number of parents that said they prefer to have their fifth graders in the elementary and. One of the things that we talked about was how we. How do we get involved or in touch with the, those parents that are having kids that are in that age group? And visit a little bit about the value of this new school and. And talk to them about what our plans are, things like that, get a little more personal contact. Um, I know you, this is probably our deeds, those are the things to talk to you about if you haven't already, but uh, it's something that's. Uh, high on my list is trying to reach out to the community a little bit more, and not just Ridgeview, but. All three of the elementaries and the middle school. Middle school's particularly interesting because you've got kids that are. In the elementary and then kids and, and the families. That are, you know, I've got kids that are in that middle school now and, you know, I'm sure. That's some of the dialogue we want to have, I'm, you know, not to say too much about that, but. Uh, I just wondered if there's somehow we could make a, make a connection with that in the next. Uh, week or two or month at a minimum. We do have a very short timeline before the election. And we'd like to reach out to as many of those people because we think they've got a particular interest in why we're in this school. So, just a comment.
Excellent, wait. I think, uh, next to Shannon, there was a presentation on.
I have three things to say first, though.
Oh, okay.
First, I better, um, prep Natalie on what it's like to steal an employee from Julie. I don't mean to make you nervous, Natalie. Um, second, uh, I want to thank Dee Dee for, um, doing me a favor and, um. Having me here at the meeting while the Bears are playing. She said it's probably gonna be better for me.
You don't have Bear swag on.
Yeah, I know, exactly. School spirit today, that's what. Um, and the last thing before I get to my presentation was, uh, Caitlin mentioned the, the themes. The day and, um, staff and students have already picked my outfit for Wednesday, so, um, really looking forward to that. Yeah.
Pictures or it didn't happen?
What's that?
Pictures or it didn't happen?
Yeah, that's why I have no cell phone. Yeah. 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 We're gonna talk about that. So, um, anyway, just a little bit of backstory on our block scheduling. Lila, you might actually know the year. Um, we went to a block schedule, I believe it was in sixteen seventeen or fifteen sixteen, so we've been in it quite a while.
Sixteen.
Um.
Sixteen.
Did my first year, yeah. Um, and so we've been in a block schedule for quite a while, um, and then COVID hit. And when COVID hit, our schedule went, uh, berserk, I mean crazy. We were in semester-long classes and quarters. Um, it was, it was just, it was insane. And so now in the last couple of years, since we're out of COVID and we're getting past it, I've really noticed and been assessing the quality of our instruction. And a lot of it comes down to, um, student engagement in the block period. Our periods are ninety-five minutes. That's a, that's a long time. Um, what I was noticing is these, um, newer teachers out of, um, the university. Aren't necessarily trained in teaching in a block schedule, and it's a huge, it's a huge difference. It's not just like your forty, forty-nine minute class periods and that, so I think that there was a piece of us that when COVID, um, showed up. That we lost that real focus on the instruction, and now we're trying to get that back because, um. I see students coming out of the, uh, the colleges that don't have the planning skills, you know? And if you don't have the planning skills, then you really get into classroom management issues. Um, ninety-five minutes, and we know you can't lecture for ninety-five minutes. That's not it, but there's about five different things you should do in every block period. Um, you know, overplanning and you need to transition, uh, to different activities. And the research actually says that the more activities within a class period, the better, that's what kids engage with more. So what we've done is, uh, we've come up with different things that, um, we're gonna do many professional development workshops on this year. Um, with staff, and when I presented it, um, to staff on our opening days, uh, I got a lot of positive feedback that they were looking forward to it. Um, and they wanted to learn how to be more effective. Um, this really goes hand in hand with not, nothing's on an island. It really goes hand in hand with, um, the cell phone policy. A lot of times what I saw are kids were using their cell phones when they didn't have enough instruction in class. And so now that's not the case, then our teachers need training on the, the planning in those, in those periods. And how they can get more in-depth, um, and increase student engagement and student achievement. So we've identified basically four different, um, areas that throughout the year, um, we're going to dedicate one PLC a month to, um. For implementing the professional development, it's going to be on curriculum redesign, which just means. What are we doing in our class periods that we can take our existing adopted curriculum and make sure that we're using the resources that we have? And adjusting that and realigning that curriculum, um, in the block schedule. Uh, engagement strategies, that's huge for our students, um, if the kids are engaged, and I do have to say, I've walked around the, um, been in many classrooms in these first few days. Of school, and, um, that's what's happening. Kids are engaged, they're not distracted and they're engaged, so now again, we need to have the support for staff. What other ways can I engage students? Well, I don't need to use cell phones because I have this engagement strategy or I'm using this, uh, resource. Um, one of the biggest ones in a block scheduling is pacing and time management. Uh, that's huge. A lot of times in block scheduling. Uh that's huge, a lot of times in block scheduling. Will think that we have a long time in the class period, so things go at a pace that's so slow you students disengage. Um and then sometimes we try to rush through. Yeah, uh and then sometimes we'll rush through and then we get down and we have forty-five minutes left in the class period. So it really is about uh giving teachers the strategies and the pacing and time management. Um and a lot of pacing and time management, you know. Um when we first went to the block schedule, it was interesting because. Teachers first thought, well, good, I'm just gonna give my class a break for fifteen minutes in the middle of class. That's not the point of being on a block schedule, so we've gone away from that. And now um we're really going to focus on some training for teachers on what does a classroom break need? You know, it's not just, let's just go get on our cellphones and you know what I mean, take a break. They're very strategic about what these breaks are going to be, they're brain breaks, they incorporate movement, um. They they're great times for uh many assessments and that, so um pacing and time management is gonna be a huge one for us. Um assessment adaptation. Um do doing different types of assessments. Rather than just the formal assessment, um this is projects, this is presentations, this is collaborative learning. How else can we assess students? I think that's only fair to students because we know that students uh are each. Should be assessed in their own in their own way, so um. That will be a big one for us as well, and then collaborative planning, and this one we're really lucky on because we have um. Our PLC time every Friday. Um so that's gonna be a perfect time for us to be collaboratively planning on these strategies when we get through the professional development workshops. How departments can work together and um really focus on the strategies and help each other out in their um curricular area. So those are the main ones that we came up with, um in my presentation, I shared some examples. Of some different lessons from different um. Different area, uh discipline areas and then um also provide teachers with the supports. And what they can use for resources, um for instance, one of the resources that we use particularly for. When a teacher has a substitute, so they have enough for the students to do, um is Ed Puzzle. Um we just brought the bought the premium edition and it's got a wealth of videos available with worksheets with assessments. Um and it's all related educationally relevant, so um I think that that's one way we can support our staff. Just to make sure they're always prepared, even if it's an emergency when they're gone, but that they come into their classroom. And they have the tools that they can to be successful and really find that high level of student engagement, so.
So. Question popped up, I gave a little here quadratic equation, put an example there. How do you balance, we have longer, we have longer class sizes and blocks and now we add that complexity of. We've added ten kids to like math class. Um how do you balance that with different learning bases where you're trying to? Work, I would think that it amplified the problem over a ninety minutes versus forty minute working, how to, I would work through that.
Right, and I think part of that would be in um. The different activities that they that they would do um in their reworking of the the group works and the. The flexible seating and then the flipped classroom, um that would be huge for the number of kids that we have. Because then classes aren't necessarily just um a lecture for that for that long and the management becomes an issue. It's it's really about the collaboration that takes place in class and you can do that with higher numbers.
And you do that with one kid who's. I can visualize what the quadratic equation looks like on the board and the other kid who's wired their letters and went math. Cause you get that, I assume that just amplifies.
Yeah, I found. That when I have kids that didn't understand something, other kids. Those other kids step in and they step up beside them and they work with them, especially in the longer periods. Um when I was subbing and doing a lot of the resource math and stuff, those other kids will step in. And they start working with those kids, they'll draw it out in pictures for them and they'll they'll spend time and it's amazing what kids do with other kids. That sometimes we. Miss or not not miss, I don't know what the word is, but. The way one kid always explains to another kid, goes zippity doodah. It's kind of cool to see how the kids will step up and help each other, especially when you have groups. And they have more time to work together.
And that is one of the biggest benefits of this is just the time that not only in depth, but the attention that you can give to maybe one or two kids. And then they're working in a group too, so um I think it would give us an opportunity to identify that frankly.
Shannon, you mentioned uh substitutes and I. I know that has been an issue for us in the past and. How do we? Make sure first of all that they've got, we've got great lessons, lesson plans developed for them, so like when they show up, there's actually something. There for them to understand what the goal is here, but also. Uh make sure that the substitutes are tuned into the same. Uh idea of what we're talking about. On a normal basis, do they, will they understand this? Uh you know, this block management, how, you know. How much training are we, I guess what I'm saying, how much training can we put into the substitutes to help make sure that they're successful? When they're there, because in past years. It was sort of a. Red light for kids or or maybe it was not quite red, but it was a, it was a light that said it's time to uh. Screen up or play it because. This isn't gonna be as well organized as Chippy, now, not saying that happened with everything, but there were enough of them that. That I heard about, but that that seems like something that we have also. Have a reading platform.
No, that's a, that's a great question, I I think where we would start um would be. Uh the teacher training and these strategies, so that they would actually be able to put that in their subfolder, one of the changes that we made this year as well. Is um. Teachers have to sign a checkoff sheet that they've gone through all of the different things um with me and the substitute folder is one of them. So we've uh identified what needs to go in a subfolder, we have a. Uh contents, uh a list of contents and. Every teacher has to have every single one of those things in there and it's also from um not not just lesson plans, but our. Uh seating charts with pictures on them, um so that that way, you know, I've looked at each substitute book. And I know that they have an emergency section. I know that they have, they're using the strategies from the professional development because of the way that they've developed their lesson plans for the subs. Um we we're gonna have to get away from just writing, you know, um here, pass this worksheet out and have the kids do this worksheet. It's gonna have to be more, um there's gonna have to be more to it than that, but it's gotta be more to it, not just busy work. It's gotta be following the strategies from the professional development, so that substitutes know their expectations. As well.
And you're gonna have to evaluate how they do on that, I guess. As the substance that is.
I think it's it's fair to say too that, you know, at the high school, we we have our regular subs. Um and several of them were high school teachers, so there's a, there's a real um, there's a real bonus. To that, so I think we have a a really good pool that we can work with. Make sure they know their expectations.
Yep, pardon the obvious question, but uh what kind of feedback are you getting? On this from your teachers?
Um feedback from the.
Just the change in lesson plans and class engagement?
They have all been absolutely wonderful. There, um like I said, uh when I, you know, mentioned the professional development, I mean, it it's it's been very positive. Um because I think, I think we're all seeing the same thing, we're feeling the same thing that. You know, we need to have this engagement in our classrooms and it's okay to say I need a little bit of support here. So we're just trying to make sure that it's very targeted support, that it's not an additional thing for them to do or anything like that, it's very relevant and meaningful to them. Um to each person in their own uh discipline area, so it's it's been quite positive.
Uh I think one of the things that Shannon's tried to incorporate in that is tapping into her teachers that. Have a good. Handle on how to do the strategies and so it's a teacher teaching each other, not necessarily adding in saying this is how to do it. Right, so really relying on the expertise of the colleagues within the school.
And because it is a frustration for them too, I believe, a frustration for teachers when. You know, they don't have great control of their classroom and they don't necessarily realize it came back down to the planning, I just didn't have enough planned. Um I'm really gonna be, uh I'm proud of our work on our common formative assessments as well, so I feel like we have a um. We're getting, developing a really good core and I think that will translate right into our um into our classrooms. And into the engagement.
Did you have anything, did you? Oh, I just, I think, you know, we all need to revisit it and we've been talking about it, I think for a while, this. The block is a long time and we have a lot of new staff and teaching and that is unique. Bozeman just made the transition, but we've been able to do it now for a while, so it's great to revisit it and. It's little things, I think bell ringers and exit tickets can be huge, you know, you start with intention and leave with intention and. So I think that these strategies are are gonna be great, um especially for some of our new teachers, I know one of our new new teachers, she said. Yeah, I had my first experience, right, I didn't plan enough. But yeah, that's really hard and you've got twenty-five kids looking at you, so you know, and I think we have a great team, we work together, we help each other out.
I will say, and this is a little while ago, so my memory might be fuzzy, but. Your life switched where I went to school in two thousand to Black's Block. And it was quite quite a change. But I'll tell you, it it changed my s- my school experience, um. You know, instead of sitting there and listening to a, you know, teacher sit there in front of a classroom with an overhead projector. Talking about the same numbers and trying to do, you know, busting out in fifty minutes, you're done. You were actually able to get so much more immersive with it and. Like I said, it changed, it changed my school experience, it's the reason why I got to high school before, I won't lie. And so I I am a hundred percent supportive of this and I think that if any, you know. It it probably is more work for the teacher, I I acknowledge that. But at the end of the day, I think it produces a much better outcome, so if if your students, you know. If they, you need to hear the reason why, I mean, I'll testify to it, it's phenomenal.
Well, there there's a statistic in this presentation and I think it said that teachers uh in the block schedule thing uh spend thirty times. Yeah, um more time uh planning and and in the pacing and that, so. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, thank you, because Little Big Sky was on block scheduling, um a true block. And um it got too expensive, so. They went back to a modified like we're on.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just was thinking.
So I was just wondering if that'll help the kids consume more content over the course of the year, or is the same content? Just reiterated more over the course of the period, how does that work? Would they be farther along in a textbook?
I think it's less. Yeah, you do more.
It's more immersive.
Yeah, you do more with less material.
Deeper, that that was my experience too, way back when those. Yeah, you you you, you know, you get into a subject and like I said, you don't just skim across, you can't mull into it, you can. You know, in a in a practical arts class, you can get a lot, your hands a lot dirty or get a lot harder into a project, you know, uh. In, you know, in a shop class or art class, you can just spend so much more time on it, but you might not. You know, you're not doing a bunch of forty-five minute long projects, you're doing a lot more, you know, eighty, ninety minute projects, which. Significantly bigger, but yeah.
And I think that that on that note, it's really important to um emphasize very specifics. For um different discipline areas because a math class is much different than a shop class. Um so it'll be important that we um very specifically. Uh give those strategies because, you know, um. I don't think I could have made it through ninety-five minute math class, but you know, um so uh I have to appreciate and respect that. And really give them some focus strategies.
Math and English definitely, it's a lot more than a shop class.
Any other question for Shannon? Well, I'm not sure if Lira is here.
He is not. So he gave you some statistics about the middle school bathroom remodel and the middle school east room replacement. Those are the two big projects that um we tackled this summer. Um so we got a lot of facts and figures in there and some pictures. Too, and we encourage you to. Let me know, I'll be happy to take you through and show you everything. We can uh connect with Julie and she'll she'll do that for you. Um we skipped student and staff recognition.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
You sure did.
You sure did.
Student and staff recognition, right there.
Well, I think I know most everyone, Brenda Tru, the communication specialist for the district. Today, I'm here to honor Carrie Fisher. She's gonna get called out today. Not only does Carrie have over twenty years working in the Montana School Business Operations. But she's also Vice President of the um. Montana Association of School Business Officials and she's recently earned. The certified administrator of school finance and operations designation. So it's hard to find anyone who's more dedicated to the intricacies of school finance. And I would please to give her this certificate today. Do you have a speech?
Doesn't have a speech, he doesn't. I have nothing to answer. Yeah, I don't have any words.
You were.
He said it would be seven forty-five to seven before he could get across town to get. Six forty-five. Five to seven.
Yeah, I guess, well, take a break or I was. I was just gonna interview Scott really quick, so um did Scott do work, will stand up for us, Scott? Full name is Steven, I believe that you go by Scott. Yeah, so this is Scott, he's our new trustee. Uh we met last week and he was our unanimous choice to take over the position, so he'll be joining us.
Little man, Wyatt.
So he has a lot of experience, how long were you on the school board before it was like?
School board in South Kingstown, Rhode Island. For twenty-six years and on the board of the National School Board Association. In Washington DC for nine. Concurrently.
And then he moved here for retirement, is that right?
Really moved here chasing Brant Joe Gretschel. But I, in order to do that. Um I retired. So after forty-six years of teaching, actually. The teaching experience and listening to the discussion of block scheduling, all of our classes were three hour classes. Um. And so I I didn't know anything about teaching in forty-five minute. And I probably would have struggled immensely, I would have had to throw out a lot of my activities, which took. Three hours. Um and in part what kept me. Um as a member of the faculty was I had. Really interesting students, it wasn't my colleagues on the faculty. And they were okay, but it really was the students that got me there. Um and in a block schedule, when you get to know your students really well. You get to see what their strengths are and what they're struggling with and you can figure out. How can I provide support for each of those parents?
Okay, I was just gonna give you a quick summary of like. When we didn't get you sworn in, kind of threw my whole spiel out.
That's how the interview went.
Basically, to fill you in very quickly, after COVID, we had problems with cellphones and the kids using them in class, so we had. One thing about that last summer where we just outlawed them completely, the initiative from the district was to use up all. And the initiative from the district was to use up all the available time we could. And focus on learning. Um, we've also had our talented gifted program implemented, um. They've given the kids who need extra help in certain subjects, extra help. And then there was also a technology piece working into this. So I was asking about the network. Um, that was one thing, like if we weren't gonna. Use our network and the kids are gonna use cell phones. We saw that we needed the best amount of network equipment. So I'll give you kind of the summary of where we are.
Well, then, then there's a national debate about cell phones in schools and. What I see is more and more schools going to some exclusion of cell phones. And clearly they are a critical ingredient in emergency response. But frankly, most schools don't have that many emergencies. And keeping kids focused on learning and, um, a lot about. Proficiency that we're looking for.
And there's John, so perfect title.
Hi, yes.
My apologies.
This is Scott.
So Scott, this is John.
Thanks for being, for having to stand up. All right, and just get your feet out. I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend. The United States and Montana Constitution.
The United States and Montana Constitution.
I will faithfully execute with fidelity.
Faithfully execute with fidelity.
The duties of honors.
It will be supported.
And regard the best interests.
And refer to the best interest.
Of the schools.
Of the school.
And their education. And all decisions. Congratulations. Porch, seven minutes. Carrie?
Yes. I just signed. We met, uh, last week.
They all have to be exactly the same.
We're looking for that from my end, bringing it back in.
Perfect timing. All right, so we do need to. I got a lot of some computer problems. Question of the board vice chair. So Joanna is not here yet. Um, she was having a procedure done. She'd expressed interest in being the vice chair. I wasn't sure if anyone else had interest in that position.
I'll nominate Joanna for the position. Second.
We have a motion in a second.
So you can give her not being here.
Guess that brings it back to a vote. Any public comment? Any board comment? Thank you. Great. All right, comes back to a vote. All in favor of approving Joanne Nordhagen as the new vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carries six to nothing. We will let her know. All right, moving on to the consent agendas. Do we have a motion to continue?
All over the map.
I'll move to adopt the considered items. One through five is listed agenda in board contract authorizing necessary action for these items. And include the same.
My second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any public comment? Saying none, it comes back to the board. Any board questions or comment?
Ten to.
Um, I will step away from this vote and a lot of work done on the consent agenda. Um, please excuse my arrival.
Perfect. You're familiar with the, would you do this somewhere in the house? Okay.
It's curiosity point of the air purifiers from. And they're just, we find out their reason again, and they're spinning us out around. Um, and then just because we have a bunch of people who explain the McKinney mental. The McKinney. Just explain what it is.
So, uh, the McKinney vento law, uh, makes sure that we're protecting students who, uh, may be experiencing. Um, housing insecurity homelessness. And so by law, um, if a student. Uh, is not in permanent housing, they move to out of district. We still want to keep them in their same school. And so we provide transportation to make that happen. Um, typically, our buses don't run to where they're living because they're out of district. So, um, a contract is a way that we, um, work with families on that.
That's all it.
I was just gonna ask about your sub recommendations. Is that a pool? That's a big pool. It's nice to see.
Yes. We thought so too.
Any further questions on the consent agenda before we bring it back to a vote?
Let's see here, my wife sent here.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carries five to nothing. Our business. I'll see fifty four sixty.
So we looked at this policy, I think it was two meetings ago, and then had some questions about it. This is the policy that, um, is recommended by NTSB in April twenty twenty five. We did not adopt it at that point, so we're bringing it forward now. Um, so it's a brand new policy for Belgrade. The policy clarifies standards for professional behavior with students when using electronic resources like email and text. And social networking. So just laying out our expectations for, um. The interaction between our adult staff and our students.
Okay, do we have a motion to continue?
I move to adopt policy fifty four sixty, electronic resources and social networking.
Awesome. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any public questions? On policy fifty four sixty? Seeing none comes back to the board. Any board questions? I have kind of one for you, DeeDee. So this is supposed to steer. Our employees towards using the, uh, parent square app, correct? What are the penalties for somebody who goes around that?
Um, well, if your board policy says that. Um, teachers can't go outside or staff can't go outside of that, then we would obviously have recourse through your board policy. I mean. If, if somebody makes an error.
It would depend on the severity of the infraction.
Correct.
Does this help protect the district from liability?
It absolutely helps protect the district. I think there, unfortunately, you know, if you look across the country over the years, there have been people who, um. Unfortunately, were hired and, and ended up targeting students, um, and this policy is designed to. To make sure that we can say you, and, and, and we feel good about bringing it forward because we provide parents where. Which is a, a way to, for staff to be able to use messaging services like texting. Um, but we have a record of it. So we're able to make sure that, first of all, our staff are. Um, interacting appropriately with students, but also that our staff aren't being interacted with inappropriately with. By parents or students. So it's a two-way street.
Anything to say? There was a big initiative, I guess, for all of the, there were members. Because there were several of these apps being used. We wanted to make a consistent. And one thing was the record. There was no history in some of the apps, so you can follow what was going on. And then some people were using direct text or Snapchat, just, which wasn't acceptable for liability purposes. So that's why the trans square was rolled out this fall. That was, uh, requested by board last year. Um, any other questions or comments before we proceed to a vote? All in favor of approving policy fifty four sixty, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carries six to nothing. Your business, revisions to policy thirty two thirty five.
I move to approve revision of policy thirty two thirty five, video surveillance.
We have a motion in a second. Um, DeeDee, do you want to say anything real quick?
Um, yeah, they changed the law this last legislative session to just clarify because it, uh. The previous legislative session, they said you can't videotape without parent permission. Um, which is, you know, not reasonable when you're talking about football practices and things that, you know, they're choir practices. Things that typically, um, we use video to help kids get better in their performance before the actual event, so. Um, but they did clarify that law. And so, um, we were able to add language that says that, um, we do not have to ask permission if it's a public performance or athletic.
Any public comments or questions? Saying none comes back to the board. Any board questions or comments?
This doesn't include security video.
Surveillance video is separate. So we don't have to have permission for surveillance video. We post it. Some people know that we're doing it, but.
I guess, I'm confused a little with how it's titled, video surveillance.
I know.
This is the same thing as like the news shows up in films or sports, right?
Anything else? However, we proceed with the vote. All in favor of approving policy thirty two thirty five, video surveillance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same. Motion, prayers, six to nothing. Revisions to policy thirty two ten, we have a motion to continue.
Motion to adopt revisions to policy thirty three ten, student discipline.
Yep, I think we're on the one before.
Yeah, you just put a hand on the truck.
So I can submit a motion to adopt.
Which one are we on now?
Equal educational opportunity. Equal application. Equal educational opportunity. Non-discrimination, et cetera, et cetera, angry.
With motion in a second, DeeDee, do you want to say something?
Yeah, the additional language in this, uh, policy was proposed by Cal, a lot of compliance with Senate Bill three fifty. Which permits school districts and MHSA to prohibit participation of a homeschool student. In extracurricular activities based on the student either not being a US citizen or not being a resident of the state of Montana. I think this came from, um, issues at the Canadian border and homeschool students, um. Doing both. So, uh, this really came from, was proposed by MHSI, was approved and, and passed, the bill passed, so he stayed to change it.
Okay, do we have any public questions or comments on policy thirty two ten? Comes back to the board. Any board questions or comments? Here, then, we'll bring it back to a vote. All in favor of approving policy thirty two ten, equal educational opportunity, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carries six to nothing. And our final one, policy thirty three ten, Rocky.
Make a motion to adopt revisions to policy thirty three ten, student discipline.
My second.
We have a motion in a second, DeeDee.
Um, there are two sections of language additions to this policy recommended. Under the areas of disobeying directives pertaining, one says that we can, um. Issue discipline for violations of state or federal law. And the other one is academic misconduct, and that is pertaining to the, um, inappropriate use of artificial intelligence.
Do you have any public comment or questions on policy thirty through ten? Saying none comes back to the board. Scott?
So on the first bullet on the back of the, what I have is the back of the page. Starts engaging in academic misconduct. Those are the first words of the bullet. Um, we're looking at adding unauthorized use of artificial intelligence applications. To complete schoolwork. I'm interested, since the language says unauthorized. Um, use of artificial intelligence, when is it going to be authorized?
They got me on a case by case basis.
Uh, but that doesn't answer the question, when would a teacher? Say, go out and use AI.
So we're in the process of stepping into this mud bog of AI. Um, uh, so, uh, three meetings ago, two meetings ago, we brought to the board trustees. Um, a, um, guidebook for the district for how we're gonna implement AI in the district. So right now there are no AI programs that are acceptable to be used. So we created a process for vetting those, so we don't violate FERPA. Um, we're making sure that it's a, you know, educationally approved AI tool. We need to provide our teachers with training on how to use it. Um, and only then will we start rolling out the use of AI by students, so.
So why wouldn't the policy say use of artificial intelligence applications? And simply close out all artificial intelligence applications until we get there. Rather than drawing a distinction between authoritative and unauthorized. I can have a teacher going to.
Teacher could say, show me the difference between the bias on something returned by AI versus what you determine to be a textbook.
We'll get this closer door on using Google for anything then, because when we get on the Google search to AI.
It just seems as if, um, the trustees have looked at the situation as it is now. And have decided AI shouldn't be a tool used by the students, but. We're still looking at that question and we may change our minds. Um, that would suggest, I don't think we've said that.
Yeah, we didn't create policy. There's a guidebook presented to us that we're using within the district's procedural ordinance. But we don't have a board policy tied to AI yet. This is used or not used, so I, I give it a go and it's right. But.
Yeah.
There's somewhere in the middle here. It's the right answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now we're really concerned about them using it to cheat. But it's a very powerful tool. It could be used in class for them figuring out how, uh, what the best way to do it. Maybe we should push these off, bring it back.
That's all.
Get a little more information and then work our way through that.
Okay.
Whatever you try, unless all were sitting by.
But it was such a good one.
You're so anxious for it.
I reset my second button.
Okay, then we'll get Scott a copy of our handbook. To review.
Enjoy it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll probably want to take another look at it, now that you've mentioned this. Any questions you have, uh, this, I'm assuming this came down from MHSA or, uh, MSPA, right?
Um, yeah, I think I pulled this. Um, yeah, I think I pulled this language from. Yeah, MTS.
So.
So we still need to find a way to have a, the intent of it here is important that you can have a student write a paper with AI. So we still need to find a way to weave that in though. And then that happened tonight. That's the thought that we're trying to hit here, right?
How do you define authorized? Is it just supposed to teachings, teachers saying you can use AI? Or did you use AI without my permission?
Answers.
Well, we have a month to wrestle with them.
Can you, can you get me a copy of the material?
I would love to.
All right. And that concludes this to the end of the meeting. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Meeting adjourned.